Seven.
Need order. We'll call.
Mackey.
President.
Baxter. McGreen. Bassett. Harper. Thank you.
All right, we'll open the floor up to public comments. There any public comments? There are none.
Oh, were we on public comment?
Yep, right now.
Yeah. Oh, no, I'm saying it. Last month, when we were here and we talked about.
The attorneys are gonna get hold of each other. Oh, they're gonna city is gonna contact yours. Okay, this week.
Alright, yeah, we did, we had.
Yeah, no, we met with him last week.
Okay.
We met with the city's attorney last week, he's gonna get with your attorney this week. You should hear something from yours.
Okay.
That's what's going on. Good. Presentations.
Stephen, I don't have the specs done yet, they haven't gotten them in this week.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Little entertaining motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor to approve the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Aye, Sabbath. Moving on to departments. Water.
Uh, got the leaving pickstone ready.
On Pearl.
Spring anyone?
How are we with uh, with L L telling? We do need thing.
Yeah, by the disallow, probably in all would make it.
Okay.
Did they give us that one proposal that's in the basket? Is that at the end of the year last year?
Yes, yeah.
Is that kind of a prediction, what they're thinking of for this next year?
Yeah.
With the roads, I know that you guys filled it in, uh, but there's a huge pothole going out of town on the north side. And it was filled in, it's thank God, I hit that pothole so bad the other day at four thirty in the morning. Uh, is there a plan not to just fill it in, but fix that, okay?
It's getting where the acid. Which, yeah, so, you know, it's be the right temperature.
Yeah.
Moving on to cemetery, work.
Uh, going back a little bit of calendar, Thursday thirty March, we had a work session to. Work out some support details for firemen's days, uh, got a chance to work closely with the fire chief. And a few shareholders that we had contacted outside about their patient. Uh, we are going likely to another work session at twenty first. Oh, I'm sorry. The twentieth to the twenty seventh of April, to hammer out some additional details, but there was. That was a really good work session, a lot of great information, and it's still coming in, so. Uh, getting support, getting our role. Back into fireman's days and. Still taking the baby steps though. Not too many of steps forward on this any days. And then our regular scheduling, scheduled meeting. Took place on Thursday sixth April. Little bit lightly attended, um, but we were able to hammer up the details. Uh, I meant to have a five year plan published. If you're with me tonight, I'll send that to you via email and I'm gonna get myself worries. You might not see it till Friday morning. On the slot. In my day job. But a lot of really good information shared. It's first time that that has happened in a conversation in an organization that's got. Recreation amenities mine for the city of David Soul. That's about all I have to say about that.
Are we on the, on the mowing for this year? Have we looked into that yet for cemetery? The mowing, the mowing this year, have we, have we looked into mowing it yet this year?
We don't find.
Are we gonna find somebody or try to?
We have.
Okay.
With the, you know, I were about having them do the mowing and maybe just contracting out the weed eating.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to full time.
Do we wanna add that discussion to a work session? Do you want me to run up the word with Dale to figure something out, or how you wanna go?
Anybody to say? My athletes, we don't find anybody to hire yet.
Okay.
There's, um, Dale has a gentleman's number who's called here many times from Maxwell. Um, interested if we are going to hire out.
Might contract or whatever you want to call it.
Okay.
Using your own equipment, there are.
So.
I like it as well.
Okay.
He called again today as a matter of fact.
Maybe get a, maybe get a quote from him, please.
Kid probably heard, yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, what do you got going Friday?
No, I have a bottle.
After nine? You wanna meet, we had like ten, ten thirty. Do you get calendar invites? You get calendar invites. If I drop the rock through your windshield.
Send me an email and I'll. Remind him.
There it is.
All right. Moving on to library, Lori.
Um, so last time we, uh, met, we had, uh. There was with the copy machine people, we've had a problem and we think hopefully now that is solved. It was the day after we met, so I didn't know if we just sent them vibes that we were serious, I don't know, because they called and. They could tell that we were serious and that we wanted the contract ended, so. Um, right now, we just should have one bill to pay and the copiers are, we are done with. This copy. Or with the copyer people and with the machine is very nearly only that thirty seven thousand we had within five years, so. So hopefully that's settled. Uh, our Easter egg hunt was a big success, we had ninety kids and eighty eight adults. And, uh, it went very, very well, and I think everyone had fun, so. Uh, we also had, uh, twenty seven people in the library coming from. The breakfast and then stopping in the library, so was a very good help for the library that day. Uh, we plan on being, um, farmer's day and, or not farmer's day, that's where I'm from, sorry. Fireman's day and we do the parade and then we will also hopefully open that day. Uh, longer like we were last two and we're willing to do whatever we can do that day too.
Jen, that might be a good, we talked about that, point from two to four where people are like.
Yeah, if they're not bringing for them, but they weren't used to.
Yep.
Here, so.
That's all.
Just so you know, well, later, because we're not, we're, last year we opened to one or two and it does for hours, I mean, so.
Yep.
Yeah, for sure. See, oh, the other thing is, um, I mentioned before we're doing a five year plan, I think that's the state library and that. And, uh, she would like, uh, us to give her thirty names of people. Uh, from around Cambridge that would be willing to, to take a fifteen minute phone call, say what they like about the town. Uh, what they'd like to see new in the town, uh, what they like to see with the library, uh, so we have a list of some people already who said yes. Um, and so if any of you would be willing to do that, if you would let me know, you would work that great. Um, then she will, thank you, Mike. She will give you a call and she said it'll only be about thirteen minutes and then she will put all the data together for us. So that we can, and then she presents it to us and then we start writing them objectives and goals for our five year plan. Um, the other thing is, I just got this today, I don't know if that's something you would be interested in. Um, it's called the Intersections Initiative in libraries. And it's talking about, um, a partnership and it's from the federal government, I believe, but it's. How to, um, have better sidewalks in cities and how to. It's part to get people to go to libraries more, but it's to give to cities and there's grants available. So I didn't know if you've been, you wanted to look at it enough. That's, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Hey, can I just for the record, say this? On behalf of the, the library gal. The Easter egg hunt is phenomenal. And then some people say, well, to Christmas, you have to deal with on nearly many adults as you did kids. Uh, I think that's what we need to hold. And so even after everything was cleaned up, everyone had left, I left there a little before noon and there was still probably. Twenty five people up back playing on the playground, that otherwise wouldn't have come together as you. Uh, I think the weather probably blessed us in some degree, but. Kind of the whole room. I really appreciated their effort, so thank you.
Thank you.
I have one, sorry, uh, we do have someone who's interested in joining the library board and her name's Aris Peterson. And she came tonight and she said she definitely would like to leave, it has to be approved by the city council. And I'm not sure what we need to do for that or if that needs to be, that, that, we wanted her to come to a meeting first just to see. But after the meeting, she said, I definitely want to be gone.
Yes.
So. Just wanted to let you know about her.
Good, yeah, we can run the agenda for the next month.
I know the procedure for it now.
All right. Moving on to finance and economics.
Uh, I haven't heard anything on the boost brand when I talked through that. Jimmy Johnson last year, I went through the building. He said, usually we should know this word, but I haven't heard it since Monday. But he did, I did get an approval, we got the money for that first brand, so we'll be giving forty thousand of that grant. Of the hundred thousand, since I guess sixty thousand came through a year ago, I was most like two years ago.
Dude.
So, and then I talked with Jay Brown, the gentleman who brought, bought this building, he gave me a tour of the building. Said he's gonna, part of it will be a woodworking shop and part of it, he's gonna open up for. He wants community gathering, so, and Susan gave him the number of, somebody wants a coffee shop, so maybe. That'd be really nice, I'm gonna have a team pattern of a coffee shop or something.
Then along with the Brandon, Sam and he got go for a district.
Oh, really? Fireworks, finally.
That was hard. Lot of work.
Yeah.
It's good, yeah, thank you.
That's all I have.
All right. Moving on to communications.
Uh, I attended the March twenty ninth story county emergency management meeting, uh, they're looking to update the twenty eighteen hazard mitigation plan. Um, they sent us a plan update guide that's due April twenty first, so I will work on. Pulling out what I can this week and then are you gonna be around Friday afternoon?
Yes.
I got that afternoon off if I stop up and ask any questions.
Mm-hmm.
Cool. Um, so we're getting that done and other than that, oh, yeah.
So with communications, at some point, I'd like to have a newsletter for community newsletter to update and stuff, either put on Facebook or. And put on the webpage, but. I talked to the Lincoln Iowa cities and they said you have to, if you're gonna do a newsletter, it has to be. Everybody has to have input on it and approval. You know, if I write something, then you all should look at it, make sure it not just. Bring up my opinion, you know what I mean? So it'd be nice to start putting out a newsletter maybe once instead of three months.
Okay.
So we never think about that with the library too, so I mean, I would be willing to put that at the same time.
Well, I imagine there would be, that'd be a great opportunity to get people in the know with. Things that are coming along with that planning.
Yeah, because nobody knows what's going on.
Well, you never know, like, have a billion dollar planner, you know, what to do with. I'd say this part is no achieve, but straightens the path.
Yeah.
So what do you wanna kick that off?
Tomorrow. I can write it.
I'm gonna do it. Thank you.
I'll start it, I'll start it.
Alright.
In a couple months, we can send one on.
I'll, I'll get it.
Okay.
Moving on, police.
No, you guys, you guys get the reports.
It's in the.
I don't see them, but yeah, they're gonna establish.
Your new guy is making a, a positive presence at the schools.
Yes.
At our school anyways, he comes to the playground, he plays with the kids, the other day we had a stray dog. That happened to find its way onto the, the, the playground. Um, trapped in horse from the school during the school day.
Yeah.
Very, very nice to see that.
You, you did have a conversation with somebody or parking there. Uh, I couldn't really answer who it was. It weren't happening, it wasn't ever.
I think that it was the same person whose dog rescued him from the playground.
Oh, okay.
But I'm white.
Yeah, that's what I believe in.
I have no problem where you just park it out of schools, heck.
Yeah, that's what we, that's what we're saying, right? Go ahead.
I wish I would have thought of it.
Yeah, and I have.
No, I think real quick, it has been awesome, um, you were parked right by, I think it was you the other day, Josiah Chandler, when I was coming back into town and you were hiding. Thank God I was following the speed limit, because Joe would have got me, uh, but I didn't notice it, definitely, they've been working such weird hours, you guys have been around, it seems like a lot more, so thank you.
Yeah, I've been telling you guys, I've been. You know, take care of your own, uh, very high traffic times.
Yeah.
Josiah Chandler, that areas, people don't realize it's forty five over there and they go fifty five zero.
And the amount of wildlife that used that bed crossing.
Yeah, here, it's.
Yeah, so thank you.
I've sat on race and my obvious south stuff. Yeah, we tried to, there's not real good places to sit at certain areas to watch, but.
Do you, will you need? To attend? Our work session for firemen's days so that. You're able to put inputs into the duty schedule so that there's appropriate amount of law enforcement presence during the, the celebration weekend?
Uh, we can, I don't know.
I think, I think.
Certain paths we've happened. Um, re- recent past, um, you know, in the past, I knew had street accidents and stuff like that, we panicked and officer.
But on. All including in your boss.
All right. Moving on to discussion items, uh, this is the sale of city property, um. We're planning and zoning, there's several properties, we have to have them review and then report back to the city. On seller properties.
So their next meeting is the first Tuesday, the month of the celebrity.
May second.
May second.
Yeah, I'm not thinking of a special meeting.
We're kidding.
When you say it was May second?
Because we missed the last meeting because we. It was starving, nobody wanted to come up here and then yell. Not going out this week.
Yeah, maybe we'll kind of. And have a special meeting for that. We need to get some stuff going.
I'll contact him. We need a special meeting.
Yeah, do you need something next week or whatever, this week, end of this week could be fine, whatever they wanna do.
Okay.
It goes. Any other, any other discussions? No, no other discussion? Uh, community center rates. Something changing?
We talked about raising them as part of the budget, we, we discussed that here and then. Or do we discuss it?
Well, it's other, you'll have to discuss it, probably have people do some checking on other people's rates. Um, what we're finding out is ours is pretty low compared to other towns. And whether we want to raise the rates, um, in order to do that, then you also it'll require a resolution. To change the rates and stuff of your community.
So right now, we have to draft some sort of proposal.
Yeah. So, well, there's some people that want to kind of be a part of that, checking some other raises and.
May I ask why we have to check other rates? Well, I mean, we can do what we want.
We did when we raised them the last time, but we're finding we're still.
Yeah, just to see what the market is with its area. I mean, I, to me, it's a waste of time, if we know we're low. Yeah, taxes and. Then just phrase it, you know, we do a three percent, city of Ames does at least a three percent every year or so. I think it costs, actually, a hundred dollars now.
The safe room is, or the whole room is a hundred dollars an hour, for half the room, it's fifty dollars an hour. And then they have the little Nord Council, and it's either twenty or twenty-five an hour in the Nord Council.
Okay. I think I checked on it before and stuff, anything's changed.
Right, right, I'll check on that. Well, just the cost of our things going up and when we, um, I'd like to have like the windows, all the windows washed, they haven't been washed since this building was built. It still has the suction cup circles on the window, and, um, so they've never been cleaned. Uh, we're in the middle of purchasing a floor cleaner.
Yeah.
Um, which I gave Bobby some information of a floor cleaner that we found that's. Um, a larger and cheaper, um, than one of the original models that we looked at, so that was something. At our last budget meeting, we had discussed that there's ones in the budget, if we want to go ahead and purchase it. But we wanted to kind of run stuff by council.
Okay.
Um, and then just, you know, some little upkeep things around the building that were noticing.
Projector. Hmm, yeah.
We need a new projector link.
You want to turn on. Okay, but you know, like the agenda up there, for your projection order. Yeah.
Is there a better technology than that detector?
Well, the problem being is we had somebody that rented the, the building and left it on all night long.
Okay.
So that's another thing, like in our deposits, when we require deposits for people, so.
Do we have a person that does maintenance on that, that point?
There he is. Dale.
Okay.
But yeah, we just look up the model number and see what the most.
I think I kind of ran this, since there was a market, it is for the center. Okay.
So Barb's gonna be in charge of that? All right, council, moving on to council agenda procedure, the agenda deadlines.
Yes, um, so I've walked through this permit, um. That they bounce ideas off of each other through emails and one of the things that. I'm finding a lot of them do is they have a deadline for anybody to. Give me for something to be on the agenda and I'd like to make it the Wednesday before a meeting. As a deadline, if anything comes after Wednesday, I have to wait for the following council meeting.
Anytime on Wednesday? Like end of day Wednesday?
Yeah, we're pretty, four thirty closing time for me. Please.
So that's in effect the first Wednesday of the week, right?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? What agenda procedure? Moving on to, uh, budget amendments.
So on the back of your packet. Um, is what I had written off for our budget report, this is through February. Uh, we're having a, a little bit of a, a struggle with our March reports after we've. Got into this new software program and get my reports to come out correctly. But I have a phone call with one of the G Works representatives. Um, on helping with month ends, so. The other thing that I was able to do, this was sort of the first time that it has the GL, general ledger revenue history report. This is what I should be able to get off of our programs and we get it all up and running, that shows us everything that came in this month. Um, cemetery lot, what we brought in is the first item, building permits is next, then it went down and it showed all of our community center rentals, so we had. Two thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars in community center rental for the month of March. Um, and then after that, it goes into your water revenues. Then your, uh, sewer revenues. And your garbage revenues. No. The only thing that wasn't on there is, there's, um, your list of receipts. Um, is also, um, I haven't done the, like, the interest from the checking accounts. Or the reports for our local option sales tax that came in, our road use tax that came in. Um, our property tax money that came in, so that's the additional that I printed on the. Um, smaller sheet that will add to the total. On the last page of that, you'll see a total in revenues, the forty-four thousand five seventy-four. Um, plus this twenty-six thousand. But until, uh, I can get G Works to get with me on getting this procedure, everything entered correctly. I will have to do these type of reports, I can push the button and it'll print off a nice. Revenue report and then it'll also print off a nice expenditure for.
So are those cats pretty easy to work with with regards to being responsible for your record?
Uh, for the most part, yeah, they're, they're, they're a, a little pushy sometimes and I've had to explain to them that we're, we're in the middle of budget time and I, I didn't have extra time to. Sit for three hours on the phone too. So, um, the gal called today and I told her I could walk off some time tomorrow morning to. See where we're at and help we get some month end reports for March, so I can see if I can get our, my record back, report to balance.
I know.
Great, full discussion. Amendments.
So the reason that I went ahead and did this budget report through February is that something you just can look at, that you can see where. We are in our accounts, um, because next we're gonna be looking at, we're gonna have to set dates for budget amendment, Maxine's coming on Friday to meet with me. Um, to look where our accounts are at in our budget and if we're gonna need to amend. Um, any of the accounts and hopefully by then I can have the, through March. Um, and we'll be able to tell departments that they're sitting really close to their budget and they're not gonna have to slow things down a little bit till July first.
So are you gonna say you wanna set a date to work on this right now?
Well, we already have a meeting next Monday for our public hearing. Um, so we got, we have to have, if, if we need to amend the budget now. Um, when Maxine and I looked at it last, we're sitting pretty good.
Yeah.
Um, but we have a, a couple large expenses that need to get put in there yet.
Will we have better?
It's due by the end of May is when I have to have it in, so, and it's kind of like the regular budget, you have to have a public hearing, you have to post. Um, do the resolution and everything, so.
Sorry, it's safe, you can decide if you.
I would say, um, I could, I could put it kind of on the agenda for our Monday meeting.
Okay.
So that after Maxine and I meet on Friday, we'll know a little bit more where we're at.
Don't. Good. Great.
Finest part here, right?
When chances are reading on Monday is.
Six thirty.
We're, some of them, we did six, we did six thirty.
Are we going?
Oh, Monday is at six thirty, okay, yes.
All right, moving on to mayor council comments, um, I just have one, the rack for the, uh, AC units got put in last Friday at the Opera House, so I can start on those.
Congress was over there today.
Nice.
It's nice.
Is, is there been any communication with regards to getting renters? Or anything like that, just the goal is to get it done.
Yeah, maybe, maybe next month, we talked about having a realtor come.
Right.
Putting something down this month, with it. Putting something down this month with it. Get it out there, get the process of sale out there. Get it going.
So, does everybody know about the city code needed to be updated? We talked to folks in Mason City, is that where they're at?
Clearly.
Clearly. And it it's past being updated. So we have to send them all the ordinance from twenty-fourteen to now. And they'll update and we do the code book. We didn't know that. Every, at least every three to five years or five, I think it's five years. Last time it was updated was twenty-fourteen.
Is there a fee to do that?
I'm sure there is.
We don't have any ideas. In our budget at all?
Probably not, I'll even find out. Cause I'm gonna try to get the. Code, the ordinance is from twenty-fourteen up to maybe one, not tomorrow.
A quick question unrelated to the Opera House or anything else, do we want to extend invitation? To the new students, schools and pretend to come visit us in June? Just for a short. Introduction, so we know who the heck he is and.
Yeah.
Maybe get a sense of what her vision is. They are the biggest employer in our communities.
Yeah.
Are you like to do that? Reaching out to her, say that.
Would you like to do that?
I don't have a problem doing that. I don't do that at all. You okay with her coming in June if she's available?
Yeah.
Let me know if she is, so I can make sure it added to the agenda, please.
Head for.
There any other comments? Well, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I just have it.